All right. Good evening. Welcome. We're going to call this August 24th meeting of the School Board Directors to order, and we'll get started with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. And Secretary, please note the role. We have two folks who are not here tonight. And as far as the executive session, we had an executive session on April 12th for Personnel and Safety, and again, just now, on the 24th for Personnel and Safety. So a couple of meetings there. Normally, this is the time when we do public comment. I think I have an inside track into what most of the public comment is going to be about tonight, and we have had further discussions on both the Health and Safety Plan and testing as a part of that, and what the masking looks like, all right, and what are the requirements? Because I know there's been a lot of confusion, and people have asked questions, and maybe they don't quite understand them. So Dr. Finnerty has put together a presentation on, you know, like a flow chart of if this, then that, and this, that, and how that works. And I think that'll be a good introduction to the discussion, and then we'll talk about that. And then, because it's a new agenda item, we will then go into public comment, all right? Because otherwise, you'd all have to wait till the end of the meeting to get out what you want to say. So I hope you understand why I'm doing it, and what I'm doing. And with that, Dr. Finnerty?
Thank you, sir. What we'd like to present tonight is to present some clarifications on student COVID-
Screening, isolation, and then quarantine. And this is all based on the Montgomery County Office of Public Health plan, which is the basis for our plan. And this will be posted to our, this will be available on our website. I do see some people taking pictures of this. So first, self-screening. So self-screening, when we talk about screening, screening is, the student is at home and experiencing symptoms. So this is, the screening piece is, do I send my child to school or not? So the guidance is, if, if your child is experiencing two or more of these, of these ones on the right, which are fever, chills, fatigue, body ache, headaches, sore throat, congestion, runny nose, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, or any one of the following, that's on this side, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, then that, in that screening process, don't send your child up to school. The recommendation is that the child gets tested for COVID-19, and if it's a negative PCR test, a negative COVID test, or there's a doctor's note showing that the child has something else, not COVID, something else, that is causing those conditions, then after 24 hours with no fever and improved breathing, the child can come back to school. So that's the big screening piece. If it's positive, or there's no test, it's 24 hours with no fever, improvement in symptoms, and 10 days since symptoms started. So one of the themes that you're going to hear, and if you've talked to me, or if we've exchanged emails, our goal is 180 days in person, and to, and to host and participate in every game, activity, contest that we have scheduled. So that, that's what we're looking at. So in this case, if there was a positive or refused to get tested, that could be, that could be a 10-day exclusion. The next piece is isolation. So isolation refers to when we have a positive COVID test. So again, there are two boxes here, with, with symptoms, so they can return to school after 10 days since symptoms started, and improvement in symptoms, and 24 hours of no fever. So that, all three of those things have to be played, be, be true before a child can return to school. Without symptoms, the child can return to school 10 days after the positive test. If symptoms appear, then you have to go right back into the with symptoms protocol, and then it has to be 10 days since symptoms started, proven in the symptoms, and 24 hours with no fever. So this could actually be more than a 10-day exclusion. Quarantine. Quarantining refers to all the incidents where a, where a student or staff member is identified as a close contact of someone else who has tested positive for, for COVID. So close contacts generally are anyone within six feet for 15 consecutive minutes of a positive COVID case. Now, there's also the household contact. So if you live in a house with someone that tests positive for COVID, that, that would be a household contact. So again, with symptoms, that is 10 days, the student can return to school after 10 days since the symptoms started, improvement, and 24 hours with no fever. Without symptoms and unvaccinated, you can return to school 10 days after exposure, or seven days after exposure with a negative COVID test on day, any day after day five. Okay? So that, so that we can welcome you back a little sooner if you get the, the negative COVID result. Okay? Now, that leads us to the exceptions. So there are exceptions to us having to exclude, exclude students. The first one, if you're vaccinated and asymptomatic, so no symptoms, and you're, you're fully vaccinated, you are not a close contact, no quarantine. What, what the recommendation is, do get a test after day three, really in the day three to five, and you should wear a mask. The recommendation is to wear a mask for those 14 days, or until you get the negative COVID test. But we don't have to exclude you. Okay? Which is huge. The next piece is the masks and distancing. Now, this is only true for students, not adults. If two students or a group of students are within, have at least three feet of distancing, and, and they're wearing masks, so all the students have to be wearing masks. If someone tests positive, if everyone was wearing masks and having three feet of distance, we do not have to categorize the other children as close contacts, and there's no exclusion, there's no quarantine. Now, the student that has COVID, yes, we're going to have to report that case and send that student home, and that, that student will go through the isolation piece. But we don't, we, we have this ability to not exclude other kids. The other piece of that is, now, let me, let me back up and specify, I did say this is only for students. It's also only true if everybody's masking. So if, if kids are masking, and some of them aren't, and we have a positive case, whoever wasn't masking is a close contact. So, well, let me be real clear. That was unclear. If, if there are two, three kids, and one kid is unmasked, the other two are masked, and they're maintaining the three-footed distance, if the kid who is unmasked gets COVID, everybody's a close contact, and everybody's out. Everybody has to be isolated. If the kid, if, if the kid who, if, if, if two kids are masked, and one kid is not, and one of the masked children tests positive for COVID, the other, the child who is masked is not a close contact, will not need to quarantine, the other child will. Okay? So they, those are those exceptions that get us, that allow us to keep more kids in school and not have to quarantine as many kids. Okay? So that, that's, that's a very important piece to me. Because what, again, and I, there's no, I can't say this enough, our goal is to have 180 days of in-person instruction, and to have kids participating in every possible scheduled event that we can have. Athletics, band, plays, everything, the whole nine yards. That's what our goal is. Okay? So the, the degree to which we don't have to exclude kids based on quarantine or isolation, that's a good thing. Okay? So this, this last piece, there's not a political bone in my body when I put this slide up here. And I, and I know that, that things have been politicized. If you want to know what the best practices are to avoid quarantine, here's it. Take advantage of the exceptions. So if, if you're old enough and have access to a vaccination, have that conversation with a doctor, and get vaccinated. Because if you're vaccinated asymptomatic, we don't have to exclude you. If you wear a mask and keep three-foot distance to the greatest extent possible, that improves your chances of not being a close, close contact and, and not having to be excluded. So that, that is what I hope is a more clear explanation of the document that, that's been out there for Montgomery County Office of Public Health, the masking and exclusion piece. Any questions from the board on that piece?
Just clarify for me again, if all the students are masked, and one of them is unvaccinated, and he's COVID positive, then everybody's quarantined? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the COVID student must be masked, to, to take advantage of that exception. If the COVID student is unmasked, that exception doesn't exist.
The last question was, if all three are masked?
If all three are masked, and the COVID-positive student was not vaccinated?
And they, so if they were masked, and they maintained three feet of distance, the masked and distancing exception would apply, and the student with COVID would have to be excluded, would have to be isolated, but no other students would have to be excluded as close contacts?
So the key thing is masking, not vaccination?
So masking, the masking saves two kids from having to be excluded. Yes.
Wanted to get that clear. All right. Everybody, anybody else have questions?
Okay, that is my report.
Okay. So with that, let's just jump right into this, because, you know, nothing like ripping the Band-Aid off. All right. So the, we're going to propose a modification to the Health and Safety Plan, along with these. And I'm going to make the motion so that, you know, I have a pretty good idea of what I, what I want it to be, and we'll talk about it. And if it needs modified, we'll need modified. And then we'll get a second, hopefully, and then we'll have discussion, and then we'll open up for public comment. So that's how this is going to roll.
Are you going to open up for public comment for everything at that time, or just that issue?
We'll open up for everything at that time. All right. Okay. So the proposed amendment to the Health and Safety Plan is that, for the first month of school, defined as the time between August the 30th here, let me help you.
Third one's the charm.
My one's the charm. From the first day of school until the second, until the board meeting in September, the second board meeting in September, all students will be masked in school, K through 12. The second board meeting in September, we will look at the results, we'll see what has happened, how this has worked, and we will reassess. We're not going to do this for the whole year, we're going to make, not going to make a blanket statement, we're going to say, we're going to look at it for one month and see what the results are. You know that I'm a big, not a big fan, but I think this is the best thing we can do, because you can see by these rules that are up here, if we're going to get to that goal of people being in school for 180 days, and we don't want to leave anybody behind, the best way to achieve that, the single best way to achieve that, is by putting the mask on, because that's the rules, those are the rules that are in place from the county. It's not, as he said, we're not talking about science, we're talking about the rules that they put out, the rules that we've said that we're going to follow, and we're going to try this for one month. Because there are going to be, there are going to be issues that are going to come up, and we're going to have to deal with them. We're going to have to deal with some of the kids, and some of the teachers, and how all that works. But I think that is the best way to get us to a month with everybody in school, for all days. So that's the motion for the amendment. Does anybody have any questions? Well, I guess I need a second. Okay, we have a motion. Motion was me, the second was Ashley. So, any questions from the board members?
Actually, just the way you worded it, we're going to be masking for the first 30 days, or to the second board meeting in September. The second board meeting is when we're going to reassess, but it's going to be for the first 30 days of school?
No, we're going to mask up to the second board meeting, then we'll reevaluate, make a decision whether to keep doing it after that.
Okay. Just, I just want to make sure it's clear, that's all.
Are there any other questions? All right. So, at this point, before we can vote on this, we have to, we will open this up for public comment, because, and we're going to open up for public comment on all the agenda items plus this one. So we'll just do it all, all now, all at the beginning, because I know there's a lot of people with concerns, and I want to address all of them. So, does anybody have any comments?
For the, for the record, the second board meeting in September is September 28th.
Okay. So just over a month. Please.
Good evening. Andrew Corman, Gilbertsville Road, Upper Pottsgrove Township. You all have amazing courage. Thank you for serving. I had prepared my comments this evening centered around Project ACE. And I know, I don't know if my time is limited to two minutes. So I'm just going to read through this. Will I have an opportunity at the end to add any additional comments?
We don't want to be draconian here, but your two minutes are starting to run. So it's two minutes, it's two minutes. So-
Well, I haven't started yet. The Project ACE-
We'll give you a break here.
The Project ACE IT community shares a common belief that adding routine school-based COVID testing to existing infection control measures can help maintain a safe, healthy environment for in-person learning by reducing opportunities for transmission while minimizing unnecessary prolonged school absences. The introduction of COVID-19 vaccines for school-aged children 12 and over are yet another measure of protection. My source from this information is the Policy Lab website from CHOP. Who is footing the bill for these draconian measures? If you continue to recommend this program, you will never relinquish it. A little over an hour west from here, in nearby Lancaster County, the Amish community is not running around with their hair on fire over this virus. Rhetorical question, why doesn't the Policy Lab mention anything about natural immunity? I feel very fortunate right now that I've been over, it's been over 575 days since I contracted COVID, and I continue to produce antibodies to this day. I was just tested last week. Regarding Binax Now testing from Abbott Labs, which is part of this Project ACE, are you aware that demand for the home test kits plummeted so much that Abbott not only has destroyed many of the kits because they have a shelf life, they've also laid off 400 people at a plant in Maine? By the way, if you had purchased 100 shares of Abbott one year ago and sold it today, you'd make $1,500. Pfizer, $1,000. J&amp;J, $1,000. Moderna, $32,000. In early March 2020, we were told 15 days to flatten the curve. Then we were told to be socially distant. Then we were told to mask up. When does it stop? Subtle coercion is still coercion in my book. All this for a disease that has a 99.8-plus percent survivability. We've all been a part of an experiment on a grand scale. I'm almost done. Some would even call it a medical experiment by having to cover our faces.
Anyone who wishes to have?
My name is Dustin DiTillo. I live in Lower Pottsgrove since 2010, since I exited the Marine Corps. I got five kids. I got four of them in the Pottsgrove Town, uh, School District. One's a senior, two freshmen, one of those is special needs, and I got a sixth grader. I also have a 16-month-old that was born in April 2020, a month after the pandemic. You know, all, all my kids, all summer long, we've been to the beach, we've been to the boardwalk, we've been to Dorney Park, we've been to Hershey Park, they've been playing rec league basketball, rec league hockey, we've been playing in tournaments in New Jersey with teams in Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, Pittsburgh. We've been staying in hotels. You know what we haven't been doing? Wearing a mask. And now I'm supposed to tell my kids to come back and act and pretend like COVID is a dangerous killer? It's not, guys. There's 75 million children in America under 18. Do you know how many have died from COVID in 18 months? As a, the CDC numbers, anybody? 361. More died of the swine flu in '09 in one flu season. We didn't shut anything down, we didn't mask anybody up. The 2017 flu season, you know how severe that was, guys? Anybody? No. No. Now, my grandparents were in a long-term care facility. We could not visit them that entire flu season. They were stuck in their bedroom. Do you guys know that? The flu season was that bad that year? If you were 65 and older, and you caught that flu strain, it's 100% mortality rate. Check me on it. Check me on it. We didn't shut anything down, no one wore a mask. I, I don't know how we got here. I honestly have never thought I'd have to come to a school board meeting. And if I did, I thought it would be about which math curriculum we should institute, not wearing a mask, guys, come on. And you know what? Real quick, I'm almost done. I've gone to the orientation for high school, I've gone to the mandatory parent meeting for athletics. Every teacher that got up there and took a mask off crumbled it up with their hands and put it in their pocket. I've seen all of you guys, I've seen, sorry ma'am, I'm not putting you out, but you pulled up your mask, the cough earlier. You guys have all touched your mask, I've seen you, you're touching your mask. You've touched, you've touched everything in here, you've touched your hands, you've shaken your hands, you've touched the keyboards, door handles, and you've touched your mask. But you want the kids to wear the mask the right way. And you're not even wearing them the right way. Thank you.
Katie Copan, also Upper Pottsgrove Township. I, I just want to make a similar plea that I did last year, when the option to go back to in-person schooling was on the table and up for a vote. I want to continue to express my desire to have a choice. There are no mask mandates at the federal, state, county level. These governments are elected paid officials, and they are not mandating masks. Neither should we. Being respectful of another person's choice is a two-way street. I've done a risk assessment for myself and for my children, and I make my choices accordingly. When I walk into a room, a store, or a restaurant, and I see someone wearing a mask, do I tell them to take it off simply because I'm not? No, because that would be ridiculous. If you want to wear a mask, wear one. If you want your child to wear a mask, wear one, wear two, wear 10. I will help you put it on, and I will defend your right to make that choice, because it is your choice. I hear phrases like this all the time, "My kid's fine wearing a mask, it's not a big deal, what's the harm?" Our poor kids. Not only are these statements really dismissive, but I think we're lending adult thinking to our children. Our kids develop their moral code by a fear of what? They don't want to be punished. They don't want to be punished. Wearing, them wearing a mask doesn't mean what you think it means. It means they don't want to get in trouble. And I challenge every parent and every adult in this room to ask their children how they feel about having to wear a mask for eight hours a day, breathing in their own spit, their own sweat. I watched a kid last night play on the playground, mask in hand, climbing up the playground equipment. If it were last year in school, guess where that mask was going? Right back on his face, with all those germs. Read the box that your paper masks come in. They don't stop COVID. They never did. Our children are our least vulnerable population. That is a blessing. We should be thankful for that, and we should stop demanding that they shoulder this burden.
Hi, good evening. My name's Brittany Bradley. I am from Lower Pottsgrove. I am a registered nurse. I have my Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. For 16 years, I've worked in a, as a school nurse. I have three kids, two of which are in Pottsgrove School District right now, one going into third grade, one going into sixth grade. And I just, I just want to advocate for our kids. They should not have to be wearing masks eight hours a day. I, I also have watched everyone up here touching their masks, pulling it aside because you're uncomfortable. It is hard for our kids to have to do that. And for what? It's not, COVID is not being spread through kids. The transmission rate is so low. In other countries, across Europe, they are not mandating masks, and they are not having increased spread of COVID. I worry for our kids. They can't see each other's facial expressions. They aren't growing socially when they're not able to look at each other and see fear in someone's eyes, or, you know, emotions through the, through other individuals. A teacher can't see if a student is having an allergic reaction. That happened in Boyertown. Someone had a peanut allergy, the teacher did not know, because we can't see our kids' faces. My sixth grader has a speech, he has his IEP for speech. How is he supposed to improve that without being able to see the way people are talking? How are our kindergartners going to learn how to communicate appropriately through school where they're supposed to be learning that if they can't see faces? This is a real problem. This isn't just parents not wanting to follow a rule. This is, the kids also, they're breathing in hot air that they've been breathing out all day, that's moist and warm, and a perfect environment for viruses and bacteria to grow. That's super dangerous for our kids. They're depressed. They don't want to wear, they don't want to go to school, because they don't want to wear masks for eight hours a day. They don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. Many of you don't want to do that. Kids are having headaches, they're having fatigue, they're having acne and skin issues from these masks, there's dental issues from having this. This isn't just, a parent needs to be able to make the decision for their child, because we know them best. And I ask that you give us that right, please.
Hello, I'm Christina Fisher. I live in Upper Pottsgrove. I have a ninth grader, a first grader, and a toddler at home. I'm a biotech, biotechnician. I work with viruses every day at work. I make vaccines that every child gets at their childhood checkups. I'm here to advocate for masks. I think they worked for us last year. They kept our children in school once the school opened. My children suffered mentally doing virtual school. My child with great grades, her grades dropped. My kindergarten, I battled with him to keep him on, on Zoom. They thrive in the classroom, and that is what I want for them. I want to keep the kids in the school. And I think the best way to keep the school open is for the kids to wear masks. I think you may think that strongly recommending masks may mean most people will wear them, and students, but I don't think that's the case, and I have two examples of why. My ninth grader came to ninth grade orientation, and her and two other students were wearing masks that day. And she also tried out for a fall sport, and she was the only student in indoor practice tryouts wearing a mask that day. So I think strongly recommending them doesn't mean the majority will. So I think strongly recommending them doesn't mean the majority will. I think we should listen to the American Academy of Pediatrics and their recommendation for universal indoor masking. I think they have one goal in mind, and that is to keep children safe, and that is what we should be doing also. So I just wanted to be a parent who speaks up and is for masks. Thank you.
Hi, Josh Federoff. I'm from Lower Pots Grove Township. My wife is Allison Federoff, she's a teacher here. I have two students in this school district as well, fifth grader and a third grader. I applaud your decision tonight to mandate masks. I was coming prepared to request that just for the simple fact of allowing our students to maintain an education throughout the school year. Right now, we don't have a good plan for if students are forced to quarantine. Last year, there was the virtual, temporary virtual option. So this year, if they were forced to quarantine, I feel their education would be delayed. And as Dr. Finnerty said, we want a goal of a hundred and eighty days of education for our students. So please consider continuing to follow the rules of the county and the recommendations of the county, and I applaud your decision. Thank you.
Is there anybody else I'd like to speak? Any comments from anybody on the board? I'd just like to make this one maybe bit of explanation so that people understand why we're making this change, and it comes down to this. We have been fighting this battle for well over a year, year and a half now. And from the very beginning, everything was you must and you shall. I sat here and said on March the twelfth of twenty twenty that we're not closing. We are going to keep going, we're going to stay open because the science says low transmission among the children and all of that stuff. Two days later, the governor took that away from us and closed the schools. What we thought was going to be a couple of days turned into the rest of, you know, basically the rest of the year. And we had to invent on the fly remote teaching. We didn't have computers for every child, we didn't have hotspots for every child, we didn't have curriculum for these classes to be done, but it was basically imposed on us by the governor. So from that low point, we got back to last year, we still had a lot of people that were very apprehensive. There was no vaccine at the time when we started school last year. There was a lot of confusion, a lot of concern, a lot of fear, and the vote was taken that we were not going to start hybrid, we were going to start fully remote. Over the course of the year, by the time we got to November, we were able to, in October, we started to bring in some of our special needs students and start seeing them again face to face. And we started to bring in the rest of the school as the year went by on the hybrid, on the hybrid education. We here know, and all the educators know, remote learning and hybrid learning was not in the best interests of our students for their education. We want our students back in school for a hundred and eighty days this year, all of our students. So we're going to run this, what I would term as an experiment, for a month, and we'll see what the results are. If we get just as many kids that were sick and out and whatever, we know that there's not a huge benefit to the masks. If the instances drop, we're going to be able to reexamine it. But we have to bring along the people who are truly afraid, the people that are concerned for their kids, concerned for their families, and not everybody's moving at the same speed. Some of us believe, as was pointed out by a couple of our guys, a couple people believe, lots of people believe that the masks don't do anything. And there's other people that believe that it's a lifesaver. You know, it's like, it's like that epinephrine shot for somebody having anaphylactic shock. Those are extremes. I'm not going to bring those people together. I can't bring those people to the same piece of ground. So what we're trying to do is to get everybody back in school, and we've talked about this, the method, and we've been given this freedom because, again, last year, the restrictions, basically, if two people looked at each other, they had to quarantine for fourteen days. It made it a practical impossibility to do in-person teaching. We have a lot more flexibility now, and the only caveat that they're putting on us, the main thing that's making that work is they want you to have masks on, and then we get to keep kids in school. That's my goal, that's why I'm going to vote for this. I'm not a big believer in the masks, as you may know, but that's how I keep kids in school. And that delivering education is my job, and that's why I'm going to vote for this. All right? So I don't want there to be any confusion about how we got here or why we're voting the way we are. I'm voting the way I am. So if anybody else would like to add or disagree or clarify?
If I could just make the clarification, because I didn't write it down, but I think it was intended, is the motion expressly for indoor activities?
Yes. All right, are there any more questions? If not, all those in favor of amending the plan as noted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right. Very good. Six, maybe?
Seven one?
Seven one.
Six one?
Six one.
There's only seven ones here.
All right. I believe that now takes us to item five, action items, personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve action items, personnel, five, one through five, ten.
Second?
We have a motion from Mrs. Grim and a second from Dina. Does anybody have any questions on this, five one through five ten? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Item five eleven, extension of the Act Ninety-three agreement. The recommended action is to approve the extension of the Act Ninety-three Administrative Compensation Plan as extended.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grim and a second from Dr. Nippert. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Item six, we have a confidential agreement for one student. We are recommending approval of the confidential settlement agreement for one student as presented.
Motion from Mrs. Grim and a second from Mr. McIntyre. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Item seven, so we have action items, education, item seven point one. This is an e-signature resolution. Recommended action is to allow the, approve the resolution allowing Dr. David C. Finnerty, Superintendent of Pots Grove School District, to complete e-signatures for grant approvals.
Okay, we have a motion from Patty and a second from Mr. Lappett. Does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify, say no. So order without objection.
Item seven point two, NJ ROTC program with Owen J. Roberts School District. Recommended action is approval of the memorandum of understanding as presented.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grim and a second from Mr. Lappett. Does anybody have any questions on this motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
I just, this is regarding the NJ ROTC or ROTC, I'm sorry. But I think this is just such a wonderful program that I really am so glad to see we're able to partner with Owen J., and I'm just proud of the students that are a part of this great program.
And I'll add to that and say I'm, not only am I happy, but I'm happy that now it's a Navy program, so even better.
I was going to say that.
No, it's okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Item eight point one is the memorandum of understanding between Montgomery County Office of Public Health and Pots Grove School District regarding Project ACID. The recommended action is recommend authorization of the MOU with the Montgomery County Office of Public Health to implement Binax Now testing program as submitted.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grim and a second from Dr. Nippert. Do we have any questions? Now, this is a memorandum of understanding that covers, that gives us the ability to use this program.
So the, the, they are two separate things. The memorandum of understanding allows the district to participate in the program and offer testing for a variety of different reasons. It could be, so in the public comment, you'll see that there is testing that is symptomatic testing, so if a student is showing symptoms and the parents agree to have the student take the Binax Now test, that would be something we would be able to offer if we had this MOU in place. You'll also see that there's assurance testing. So last year, we offered optional assurance testing to staff members to just assure them that they were COVID-dead active. And then the third piece is testing of athletics and co-curricular participants when in substantial and high transmission. So that would also be in there as written.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? All right. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. So that brings us to new business. So does anybody have, anybody else they want to bring up? Anything else at all? Let's start with you, Dr. Finnerty.
Well, I would like to, and I don't know if you were going to say this, but I would like to officially welcome our junior board representative, representative, and I'd like to let her have the microphone to introduce herself. So Lily, please.
Hi, my name's Lily Garrett, and I'm sorry I couldn't make it to the first board meeting, I was out of town. But I just want to say thank you, and I'm so grateful that I got this position to be a student board of representatives, and I'm happy to share my opinion with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Okay, do you have any things?
I, today, we had our opening day ceremonies welcoming staff back, and we had, I think, a wonderful experience. We had our cheerleaders participate in the program, we had our marching band participate in the program, we had a number of students actually take the stage and talk directly to our staff, welcoming the staff and emphasizing the importance and their happiness in being back. So I was proud to be part of that, and it was a great celebration of our students and hopefully a kickoff to an outstanding year. That is all for me.
Okay. I'd also like to extend a thank you to all the Pots Grove football parents who helped us put on our football camp last week. Normally, we go out to Camp Wade, but there was concerns this year with that, so we decided to do it here, and the Pots Grove parents made it work really, really well, had a very successful week and a successful start, matched maybe only by the marching band who got their start and have wrapped up their work for this week.
Yes, it was a more than a two-week program, and on Saturday, we, I didn't count, but I'm thinking we had over a hundred parents out in the parking lot celebrating and actually seeing their program. What the students have told me is that they have never been this far advanced in their program, and it's a small program, but it is mighty. They make, the sound that they get out of that small group of students, it's fantastic. I've really enjoyed, I've got to attend a couple of the practices and got to meet some of those students. If, to all the students out there that might be looking for an activity to join, our band is up and coming, and I would strongly recommend, if you have musical interest, there's a place for you.
Patty, do you have anything for us?
No. Well, the only thing I would say is I know it's been tough, you know, and we're getting there, but just remember to be positive, it's all about the students at the end of the day. That's why we all sit here at the board. And just remember, if you have questions, to come, do the protocol, you know, go to your teacher, hopefully it doesn't go to the principal and hopefully it doesn't come to our level. But just work together, work together, and know that the community of Pots Grove, we are all here to make all of our children successful. And good luck.
Somebody else have anything? If not?
Well, just, I want to welcome everybody here to a, what will be a interesting and successful year. We had a really impressive, I was really impressed by the way the group, the way the band came together. Our band is small, but it's mighty. And I was really impressed watching the start and the enthusiasm that our students had and the parents and the teachers who were there.
Thanks very much. And all of this is a lot easier in person. It works so much better, the education, the instruction, the interaction, the learning, it all happens much better when it's face to face, and just can't say enough about that. So I think with that, we'll wrap up that and move on to public comment number two. And this is open for any sort of public comment. And again, the rules basically are two minutes on any subject, and Mrs. Custer will keep the time on that.
Hello, I'm David Duschevsky, Lower Pots Grove Township President. I'd like to commend the board on the motion for the masks earlier in the meeting. Regardless of personal belief, we have a responsibility to the community and to keep the school operating, so thank you. There is one thing that I would like to bring to attention, though, with the CDC recommendation for distancing of six feet and the Montgomery and General School Safety Plan recommendation for, I think it was three feet where prohibited by space or generally greater. I was a bit concerned when I did the open house last night and saw the kindergarten rooms with kids who are obviously unvaccinated and not good at wearing masks. The desks are arranged in tight four packs of desks, all facing each other at about three or less feet together, extremely tight to each other. So obviously, that goes against common sense. I'd like to see some changes. There was plenty of distance in the room to spread those out a little bit. There's no reason to have four kindergarteners facing each other as close as you can possibly move the desks, so thank you. I hope someone takes some action on that before school starts. Thank you.
Name is Bob Boyce, I'm in the Lower Pots Grove Township. It's the first board meeting I've ever been to in my life, and I've been educating kids for fifty years. Two questions, which I could not find the answer to on the website, and that's why I'm asking here. One, based upon Representative Sarisi's movement with respect to charter schools, where would I find a list of the charter schools that are supported out of the Pots Grove School District?
Yeah, I'd suggest Mr. Linky is the business manager for the district. Give his office a call tomorrow, and they'll accommodate you.
That's question one. Next one is, I'll ask it, and then just kind of go back to my seat. Do you have any place that I can look to see if the professional development for the students, I mean, for the teachers and the staff includes aspects of critical race theory?
That question was brought up at the last board meeting. We do not teach critical race theory.
Understood. I didn't ask about the students. What I asked about was professional development for the teachers and staff. Does it apply also to them?
There is no professional development on critical race theory.
Thank you.
So then, if our kids decide not to mask, what's the alternative? It's not a law. It's their right to breathe oxygen, so what's the alternative? My name is Dustin Detilla from Lower Pots Grove. Again, five children, four in Pots Grove School District. Is there an alternative? Are they going to not get educated because they don't want to wear a mask? And then I'm going to follow up with that. What's the litmus test? Your feelings? Like, where's the line? Because what if there's a bunch of cases, but it's because they have masks on and they're constantly touching their face, and you say, oh, my God, look, there's a lot of cases. We have to continue masking. How about we do this? We leave it voluntary, and we see if it's the masking kids that are getting it, or the non-masking kids are getting it. And then we make a determination after 30 days. I mean, doesn't that not seem legitimate? We're not going to get a fair assessment if you mask every kid. And that's all I got to say.
Actually, I don't, I work with the largest person here, PA, largest person. We have to get fitted for masks. I've worked on the COVID ward. I was in about, I don't know, 300 cells of gentlemen with COVID. We had to get fitted for masks. You know, only kind of mask were approved to wear around COVID patients? N95. We had to get smoke inhalation testing. Cotton masks aren't allowed in my jail around COVID patients. Neither are neck gaiters because they don't work.
Katie Kopa, Upper Pots Grove Township. I have the same question as Dustin. What's the litmus test here? Last year, all school year, I got a letter from the school district several times a week about COVID cases. Cases is not the litmus test that we should be looking at. Hospitalizations and death, as morbid as it might sound, that's what we need to be looking at. Number two, last year, there was a lot of discussion at the end of the year around the security guard at the high school. We no longer have a partnership with Lower Pots Grove Township Police Department. It was discussed at the end of last year that a third-party vendor was hired, and I've heard nothing since. So just interested to know, are we going to have any form of security in our high school and the district buildings that are in Lower Pots Grove Township? Because we do have it at upper.
Okay, do you speak?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew Corman, Upper Pots Grove. So I echo the thoughts of Katie and Dustin. What is the litmus test? I just want to share some information about cases. This is from around the world. So two months into Israel's reinstated mask mandate, cases are up 79,000%.
79,000 or 7900?
79,000. 79,000%. Back on July 29th, the CDC director said that masks could stop the Delta variant surge in two weeks. We're six weeks into the LA County's mask mandate. Cases are up 250%. South Korea continues to report record-high COVID cases, even with a 99% mask compliance. But sure, experts, if we only wear masks, cases would never go up. So my comment, I guess question, if you will, is like, when does it stop? Where does it stop? It doesn't make any sense to me that we're, everyone's worried about this virus that has a 99% survivability. Here is my question. Here's my question. You're getting the guidance from the county. Who wrote the rules? Who wrote the rules? Who's in charge at the county? And where are these rules coming from? That's what I want to know. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Yes, Pam?
Mr. President, Joe Womack, the Senator of Post, 31 years a Pots Grove resident, two Pots Grove graduates.
I'd like to know, please, what are the alternatives? Should a student decide not to come to school with a mask? Should a parent send a child to school without a mask if a parent refuses to have his or her child masked? What are the alternatives there?
As you know, and you've been here for many years, and I point this out frequently, this is not a question and answer period. This is public testimony is what it is under the code. So if you have comments and questions about enforcement and school policy, that's handled by the administration during the week. And certainly, I'm sure the administration is pleased, and the building principals and administrators will answer questions. But this is not a Q and A.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
All right. So a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a second then. Okay, thanks, buddy. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you.